No, you can see now it's still a station. Yeah. Everybody discussed renaming it.
For the rise of the pledge allegiance.
Right, yeah. I guess that's beautiful.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
And to two of the people for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with every right and justice.
Oh wait. Sorry?
We don't have a.
Yes, right there.
It's right here.
I'm just gonna start by saying it could be kind of contentious meeting tonight with some strong opinions on both sides. I'd like everybody to keep it civil if we could do that. So everyone can say their piece and whatnot.
Oh, your mail's right here.
Oh, thank you. You don't go well without them usually. All right, we'll call Paul. Teresa.
Yeah.
Ricky.
Yeah.
Bill?
Here.
Right. Department head briefing. Do you have anything for Rose?
Yes, I talked, I talked to Zach. I told Teresa she's gonna put it on her page she's working on. Tomorrow they're gonna put the signs out for Gully Oven Road. And he's gonna start Thursday with the excavation on Gully Oven Road.
Okay.
So he'll be going with that. And he got ahold of CMP for the transfer station for the power lines.
Okay.
And he called them, but they haven't quite got back to him yet. So what they're gonna do is retention the lines and come out and take a look at it.
Okay, beautiful.
And you're, okay, I'll do that under a different thing.
Okay. Individual selectmen issues. Let's go right into the different thing.
Okay. Tomorrow's the meeting.
Yep, 10 a.m.
And you're gonna be there.
Yes, sir.
This time, put your work boots on and a safety vest, please. You guys did a good job on the other side.
Oh, the fencing?
Yeah, barefoot and all.
Well, I gotta wear shoes?
Yes.
Okay.
Work boots, please. You're gonna be, have a safety auditor there tomorrow. And then, yeah, that's, that's coming up. But then like the power lines, you can explain that to her.
Yep.
They're coming for the transfer station for the power lines. If there's any other questions.
I'll just call you.
Yes, I would appreciate that.
Thank you. Oh, nice. I'm sorry, yes. Yep, absolutely. So we're not used to the big room. Anything else, Rick?
I'm also.
Okay. Bill?
Thank, thank you, Rick. This past weekend dug out the back end of the, that caving in concrete for the, in the station. So getting ready to pour that, so that's good there.
Should be done hopefully by Friday.
That's good.
And then, so that's the floor in the, in the fire station that we're redoing. And Rick, uh, jackhammer?
Yeah.
Jackhammered it out. Hammered out the old concrete and is getting ready to pour new concrete in the back to make it more, to correct some issues in there.
And the tin's coming along on the heat rock too pretty good.
Yeah. Yeah, it's starting to look good in there. Yep.
Other than that, that's all I got.
Okay, Teresa?
I worked on the personnel policy today with Leslie for an hour. And we need, so I made all the changes from when we talked. And then she's just gonna change a couple of sections. And then it should be okay to come back to you guys again to just check one more time. And then we can send it to the lawyer if that's okay.
Awesome, awesome. So last week I went to the transfer station with the code officer. And a couple of the highway guys showed up. And Josh, the transfer station manager showed up. And we set the fencing on the one side of the compactors. It was great because we saved the town a lot of money by doing it ourselves. Having Rod there was, was great because it's up to code. And we probably saved three or $4,000 with myself and Rod and, and the highway crew showing up to do it. They're taking care of some other things up there that we can get fixed that need to be updated, which is appreciated. It's also saving the taxpayers money and fixing a few other fencing so we can get the safety audit done and appease the, or take care of the issues that have been pointed out to us. Recycling, hopefully we'll start with the cardboard compactor in the next month and a half or so. And the glass container is almost ready to be put down so we can start recycling glass, which will be saving people money. I don't think I have anything else for myself. Paul? Yeah, take your time.
We need to set the date for the open town meeting to address the over, overjuice, over expense, expenditure, overages. There we go. Right now, October 18th is the requested date if the board is in agreement.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
That's my next question, 10.
Yeah. Are we gonna ask Richard Nash to?
Next one, good job.
Yep. Is everybody okay with that, using Richard, if he's available?
Can I ask a quick question? I've had some people point out, when are the tax bills gonna be sent out?
They're off to the printers right now.
Off to the printers?
Yes.
So maybe another week? Two?
Shouldn't be much more than that.
Okay.
We have a new printer this year because the gentleman that, that's the company that did it last year didn't do it this year. So we got to find a new one. Let's see. Just wanted to make the board aware, I'm tracking, or the board's tracking actually, the expenditures for this year, as carefully as we can. And library right now is running a little high. So I asked her about that. And she explained to me that with the changeover of the school this year from the grades that it was to pre-teen gap, she's had to invest a lot of money into the library, putting in new shelves, new chairs, new tables. So she's spending a lot of, a lot of cash right now, making her budget look like she's gonna go out of money here shortly. But she's not, she's planned out to get these expenditures out now. And she's using some of her raised funds that she has put together. So I think she deserves a lot of credit. She's putting an awful lot of work in there and making do with a very tough situation right now on short notice.
No interruption? Where's the sign in sheet? If you could just sign in for us, sir, that would be great.
Did you get the email on the coalition for follow up on invasive plants?
No.
On the comp, on the comp.
There's something new they're trying to put together. They're reaching out to someone, be hard.
So has everybody else seen this?
No.
All right, so. This is, I'll just read it. Saying more needs to be done to support the department to provide the resources to address deficiencies as it relates to doing battle against invasive aquatic plants. We collectively heading in the direction of an expanded and aggressive use of herbicides for specific infestations and manual or mechanical removal for others. All of these require more than what the department can give presently. That said, department needs to specifically state what the resource needs are at present to be more successful so the coalition can actively advocate support. The coalition is formative stages. To date, we have received confirmation of participation from Waterboro and Burwick, and willingness to do so from Limerick, Lebanon and Richmond, who at present do not have managers. So they need, need to review their respective boards. All have favorably responded. The coalition will be comprised of municipal leaders either appointed or elected to represent their respective municipality. The role of this coalition is to simply support the department's need as they articulate them to solve the problem of invasive aquatics, whereas it is a state's problem to solve and we all serve as supporting cast. Education is highly unlikely, but it is the goal. Once the needs are articulated, the department, this coalition can bring a support to the Legislative Policy Committee and beyond. Please not hesitate to reach out if you have any questions. So I guess they're asking for a representative from the town. I would be willing to do that if the board doesn't have a problem with it. Or anybody else wanna be part of it too?
So what is it, like just?
Being part of a group of representatives of the towns that work to come up with a plan to tackle the invasive species in the lakes in the region and then present it to the state. You working on that, sir?
Are you, are you working on, you're working on this project too, aren't you?
Would you like to?
Yes, he would.
Okay. All right, well, I'd like to be part of it if the board's okay with me taking part. Okay. And then if John or someone from the Conservation Committee'd like to join me, that'd be great. All right? I'll let Lynn know, just send them an email. Okay, thank you. You're all done? That was quick. Did you wanna go over the, um, the budget shortfalls with the board to make sure they're, do you have enough answers from everybody? Let's, uh, let's still pass it around to make sure everybody's on the, okay with it. So you can, have you looked at this? And you're okay?
We talked about it.
Okay. You've seen it, right?
Oh, yeah.
Where we're at?
I just suggested that we have a little bit more information on the bottom where it shows that it like comes out to like 178.
Oh, yeah, we will. This is the number that the board needs to be okay with.
Didn't we have some stuff that he was supposed to be applying to that?
Yeah, it should be right here. Did all the stuff for fire and rescue come in that he was gonna apply to it that we know of?
Only thing I recorded is what's actually been received.
Okay.
I don't know if there's more pending out there or not.
That grant money from extra help.
Yeah, I don't know if that's where the project at, it might have been. So that's the shortfall. Bill, I don't know if you've seen that yet.
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago.
It was in the email.
Okay.
The only other thing I need to know is if you wanna do one question or two questions on this one?
Okay.
Reason I say that is you can ask for one solid sum, the 246 or something like that. I'm not sure what the number is now.
229, 468.
Okay. You can ask that as entirety, or you can break it down into two questions where you show what was put back from, what we didn't spend last year. And then the balance of what we.
Okay, so the, so the overages in the other departments will lower this number. As long as we can use them, we have to get the question to be able to use them. So last year's budget, just so everyone knows what we're talking about. We were over in certain, we, we overspent in certain areas. Legal fees. This hasn't come back yet, or it will come back out of this number, correct?
10,000 over 26, we forgot.
Is coming back. So this number's gonna drop to 25 to?
We'll go up another 16,000.
Okay. So legal fees is technically over, but we have another 16,000 pending, which is gonna drop it well within, we're only $586 over, but we have 16,000 coming back in that will drop us to 15,000 under approximately. Dispatch, which is for the fire department, it's kind of an uncontrollable cost. We just misbudgeted apparently, or the fees went up and we didn't know, was over by $3,704.85. The highway department, due to the storms and some FEMA cleanup and whatnot, was $120,500 over. The FEMA reimbursement is $40,730. And we didn't completely, the FEMA didn't completely reimburse us for all the money spent on that, correct?
Right.
So part of that 120, which really drops to about 80,000, it was spent because of the bad storms. And several of the years in the past, the highway department has helped the town out by not spending their money and allowing us to transfer that money to other departments. And this year, the winter, the late storms and whatnot caused, caused some issues. Fire and rescue was over by $66,534. And the cemetery was over by $3,115. And that was the excess mowing that needed to be done. So the.
And a new contractor, which had a quite price increase.
Okay. Which gave us a total of $229,468 of, of over in these departments with $50,730 coming back, which put us at about $179,000 over in these departments. Do you know how much overage there is from the other that we have to? Oh. And then in other departments, we were under budget by $168,355. So the grand total we're gonna be over for the year is about $12,000, which on a $4.3 million budget, isn't too bad. We overspent in some and saved in others. So that is gonna be on an open town meeting where we get the taxpayers to hopefully approve us moving the money around and taking the additional $11,000 out of the general fund to cover the budget shortfall. And that is what, October 18? At 10 a.m. And that'll be here at the school, just so everyone knows what we're talk, we're talking about. I do too. Everybody okay with two questions?
I am.
All right. Is that it, Paul?
That's it.
All right. Unfinished business. We have Lord Road Bridge and Upper Guinea Bridge, which Zach is working on. Camera wires at the transfer station.
Yeah, that's what.
And the wires, the cam, I have to talk to Josh about the camera, the wires, CMP's taking care of. The safety rail and the fence is pretty much done. Oh, no, the power wires, the camera wires is a different situation. Power wire's being taken care of. Glass container is there. We need to do some patching in the location it's going to put it down. Monument on Center Road, anybody have?
Nothing on that yet.
Okay. The road commissioner's pretty much got his tools and his computer. Shoulder work on Gully Oven. That's getting started. The culvert and ditches on Blaisdell Corner, that's being taken care of, correct?
Not yet.
But it's, it's.
It's, it's in the works.
Okay. The repair of the guardrail and the roadside mowing is started, correct? Okay. So that's the unfinished business. Paperwork. Do you have the minutes, Paul? Make a motion to accept the minutes as written from Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025?
Second.
All in favor? Yeah. I'll give you that, Paul. Okay, you wanna go ahead and do that?
It's an abatement to recover the house that burned up on Smith Road last April. This is just to reassess the taxes, the property's been sold. They need to settle out the new amount. So this is an abatement for the house, it's no longer there.
Okay. So we're approving a tax abatement for $254.33.9. Because the building is no longer there. The building value is $279,000 and change. And it's map and lot number R08-033, account number RE1210. So we have a reappointment for the planning board here?
He's an alternate right now and there's an opening for full-fledged.
Cause we lost one and moved out of town. We need him, so he's the alt, but because. Sorry. It was because he was, he was, he was the alternate, but one of the members left. So now he wants a full position.
But we don't have appointment paperwork?
Uh, only once we approve this and then we'll do the appointment paperwork.
So, um, this is an application from Richard Chip Harlow to go from planning board alternate to a full-fledged member. We lost one of the members, so we have an opening. And it's standard procedure to promote an alternate if they're interested. Does anyone have a problem with Mr. Harlow becoming a full-fledged member?
I do. Go ahead, make the appointment for full time. And fulfill the role of, I'm not sure who the name is on the bottom.
Michael Kennedy.
So is he gonna, he's gonna finish off his term?
Yep.
That's one, one year left.
I don't know how many years left, doesn't say. I'll second it. Are you second it? All in favor? Oh, it expires 2027. So it's two years left. All right, so that's all set. And then this is to Laura Bragg, County of York and the State of Maine. There being a vacancy in the position of election warden, the selectmen of the town of Lebanon in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the State of Maine hereby appoint you as election warden for the election date of November 4th, 2025. Within and for the town of Lebanon, such appointment to be effective until close of polls given under our hands this 16th day of September, 2025. Lynn is requesting permission to, attend a meeting from the YCCAC, discuss the needs and funding issues due to the York County shelter being closed and the lack of federal and/or other funding. I wanna come up with some creative problem solvings in the ways of how YCCAC could help by matching GA funds with other funds. This is in Arundel, Wednesday, September 24th from 2 to 4. Does anyone have a problem with Lynn attending?
No.
Okay. Make a motion that Lynn Davis be allowed to attend the meeting Wednesday, September 24th from 2 to 4 at the Arundel Municipal Building on Limerick Road. All in favor? This is a training and development class for labor and employment law workshop requested by our HR treasurer. This is a request from our treasurer to go to the MMA Annual Convention. Recertification of treasure certificate, many financial and HR related topics, also insurance and workshop comp sessions. And that's 10-8 through 10-9. And she will be staying at the, at a hotel up there for $109. And the cost of training is 125. I don't, we don't need a motion, because we've all. And training and development for code officer, erosion and control practices in Wells, Maine. Request for vacation time. There's a request for a mixed nomination money counter machine for the town hall, $239.98. We have an Eagle Scout project that Braden Cautou talked to. talked to to us about a couple of weeks ago at a play area at the STS Field. He's met with Rodney, outlined the area that it will be in, and gone over the rules and Rodney just wants us to sign off that we're okay with that, which we agreed we were last two weeks ago, I believe. Public participation. Anybody? Yeah. Are you a resident of the town? Are you a resident? Are you a resident here in Lebanon? Okay.
Discussion about painting center lines on, as an example, Center Road.
Yep.
I was driven off the road a few days back during early morning, followed by a 10-wheeler driving down the center of the road, you couldn't see where it was going. The discussion we had that day lasted about five to six minutes and everybody was in agreement that it's a good idea to do that and they named three or four other roads similar. And the second part of this was when you patch a road and it gets torn up two weeks later and you go back and you repatch it, would it make better sense to cut that section out and put down a whole pad like a section down there instead of little pieces everywhere?
That's a funding issue, but yes, it would make more sense, but it comes down to money.
Throwing good money after bad constantly.
Yeah.
That's just one example, I mean, there's other roads in towns that are probably just as bad in some areas too, but I can't see us throwing good money after bad every time, every other week. Patching these things up all the time, it's just a waste of money. I know budgets are tight.
Yep.
But if you keep throwing good money after bad, you're losing.
Yes.
So if you were to cut a strip out and lay down a strip, it's going to be good for a longer period of time, especially on Long Swamp before that big turn. The whole section in there may be 30 yards long, it's just all torn up. And when winter comes, it's a disaster. So.
You know what he's talking about?
That was a point I wanted to make.
Okay.
Now, are you supposed to put passing lines in front of a daycare center? Depot Road.
Depot Road is a state road, so we don't fund.
That's that's a state road?
Yeah.
Depot Road and Hubbard Road is a state road.
That's a 25 mile an hour zone and they put a passing line in there too.
Maybe you could talk to.
That's just my opinion.
Yeah. Could you talk to Zach about those two things? So he, Rick works with Zach, the road commissioner, pretty close. So he can reach out to him and talk to him about talking to the state about what you just spoke about, because that's a concern.
And to what it would cost you, as an example, Center Road, lying down in Center. Just sort of some kind of guidance to see where you were on the road on those days and it's almost impossible to see.
Yeah.
Well, kind of give you where you are.
Yeah, no, we we had spoken with, it was a turn, a change in road commissioners. So that kind of got pushed by the wayside and I had forgotten, I remember now that you mentioned it. Um, so we can talk to Zach, he's got a two-year term. And Rick will talk to Zach about finding out about.
Maybe you can address that the next meeting.
Okay, could you do that? Yeah.
Some of the stuff you're talking about, the hot topic about cutting out patches. You had a spot up on Blanchard Road that that's what they tried to plan to do. Just so you have the understanding of that spot that's up there, don't quote me on the the complete number, but the complete number was $60,000 to repatch that like you want, cut it out, fix the spot on the hill. So the the budgets are very low and it is costly to do that. We we, but he has got a quote on doing that. Long Swamp, I'm pretty sure he has not got, but he's aware of that spot.
I was just using that as an example.
Yep, yep, no, no, I get it.
You know the Flat Rock Bridge Road, where the bridge is? Where the campground is?
Yep.
You know how there's two patches on either side of that bridge? I got the governors of both states to pay for that and put that in a couple of years back.
Get us some money.
They said, since it's a state bridge, controlled bridge.
Right, yeah, the state stuff.
Both states participated in repatching it because it was pretty bad.
Right.
I'm trying to help out with all that, too much money.
In in the cost of things going up now, it's not like it used to be five years ago, so a lot of the materials and everything is just.
Two and three times as much.
Oh, yeah, everything is up, but he has some good ideas of how to do the patches and he's trying to implement it. So it's just going to take a little time.
And I see you finally fixed the the transfer station, the holes along where people have to move garbage over.
Yeah, yeah.
That finally got done, that was a pretty bad situation.
Yep, yeah, there's there's a lot more work going on up there too now, for safety work.
Yeah.
At the transfer station.
Is recycling ever going to get any more involved, like cardboard and glass and plastic?
Yes.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, the glass container is there.
There is one there now.
Yeah, it's it's not being used yet, but we have to patch the.
Was it off to one side?
It's it's there, it's not ready to be used yet. We have to fix the asphalt. The electrician, reaching out to him in the next couple of weeks to run the wiring, I've got the compactor set up with waste management and then we're going to get the concrete pad poured, it's going to be next to the building. A little issue with figuring out the traffic flow. But, yeah, the and I'm working on getting some cans for the metal to change that setup, so the metal's not everywhere. And the scale for construction debris. So the taxpayers are 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 not footing the bill if someone comes in with a certain amount, so yeah, it 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 should be done mostly operational, except for maybe the scale in the next month and a half. Oh, that's what it's for. Yeah. Absolutely. All right.
We all drive into the roof.
Yes.
I'm just trying to bring it up so that they can basically see what a block size is. Because all of us travel, as I just said, and there are some dangerous areas where blocks are hidden.
Yeah.
And you just can't see.
Yeah.
So. That's just my point.
Yep, no, absolutely, and and Rick will have an answer for you next, next week. Next Tuesday, yeah.
Right here.
Yep, no, no, at the at the town hall, yep. We had a special event tonight, so we moved it over here. Anybody else for public participation? All right. Ann said she's going to be here in 20 minutes, so. We'll go into Terry. You're up. You are, and we're to you.
Well, after the agenda items, then you go to public comment. But you skipped, already passed me on the agenda and went right to the public comment. So I guess we're going to ask to be put on the agenda for October 7th, properly and officially.
So you have a problem with me taking this gentleman before you to talk about the roads?
I have a problem with you not following procedure. I was supposed to be on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, and you are, and we're at that moment.
You walked right past the agenda and went to public comment.
Yep.
I had asked for October 7th.
So you'd rather this gentleman wait, I'm speaking, you'd rather this gentleman wait the hour, hour and a half for everyone to go through their things and make him wait and sit through this than to get his few comments out of the way?
Right, because you did tell them on public safety with non-public safety issues.
All right, so Terry, would you, would you like to speak, I'm not, I'll be honest, I'm, if you don't want to speak tonight, I'm not. My opinion, let me ask the board, does the board want to move to October or?
I originally asked for October 7th.
I understand that.
I totally could have October 7th because there was a special meeting coming up.
Yep.
I've now learned that the special meeting is the 18th, so there's no reason why I can't have the October 7th that I originally asked for.
I am not for that, I feel she is here, people are here, they've taken their evening to be here, that she can speak her piece now. Um, if she doesn't, then she's more than welcome to show up for public participation at another time, but this is your time on the agenda.
I was on the agenda.
And you still are. I know I did, Terry. I, Terry, I understand. I did change procedure, yes. There is, because I I've said that. I understand that, but what I've said is I'm not putting you. I am not putting these people through having to come back to be here for this when they've set aside their time to come here. If you'd like to speak your piece, you have your time now. If you don't, then that's fine. On the agenda, no, you, not on the agenda, you do not. You're not on the agenda, no.
Why wouldn't you, we're here right now, we should do it right now.
I was on the agenda.
You still are.
I get scammed and I don't appreciate the disrespect. And I originally asked for October 7th and was told that it was not a doable date because of a special meeting. There is no special meeting prior to October 18th. If the special meeting is October 18th, then there is no reason why.
Out of respect for you, Terry, we put you on the agenda, we've moved the meeting over here, all these people have taken time to come here, I don't think they want to come back October 7th. I think that.
Out of respect for me, so you're telling me you're doing me a favor of putting me on the agenda, allowing me to be on the agenda?
No, but it was out of respect.
You're telling me it's a privilege to be on the agenda, is that what you're saying?
That's not what I'm saying.
Sounds like it's me, sir.
Okay.
So you're refusing to put me on the agenda anytime in the future. It's now or never.
For this, yes. Yes, I am.
And that's a unanimous decision, there's no reason why I can't have October 7th like I.
There is, but if you, not about what you want to speak about tonight.
You have no idea what I want to speak about tonight, sir.
It's about Charlie's Hill and defending it.
You never asked me.
You've made your statements, you've made your statements.
I don't appreciate being bumped off the agenda like that.
You weren't bumped off the agenda.
Yes, I was, it was very disrespectful and I took offense to it.
Okay.
Okay. That being said, where's your camera? Shut up, right there. Case, people watching, you're not familiar with me, my name is Terry Poyet. I've lived in Lebanon for 20-plus years. I'm a graduate of Noble High School, I went to school here, I raised my children in this community, I've been a member of this community for a long time. I also am known as Chaplain T at Charlie's Hill, also known as Cannabis Church of New England. I have owned a reputable state, reputable state inspection garage for 20 years in this community. I volunteered as a Girl Scout leader, soccer and softball coach, not because I have massive knowledge of soccer or softball, but because the children wanted to be able to play and there were not enough coaches for all the children to have teams. So I volunteered to do that for my community. I love this community. I'm also a lifetime Girl Scout, I was a Brownie, I was a junior, I was a cadet and a leader. On my honor, I will try to serve God and my country, to help others at all times and to live by the Girl Scout law. I have lived this my whole life. So I don't know who's turned me into a monster, okay, but I am not a monster. I've operated Charlie's Hill for 10 years, we've had no public safety issues, we've had no arrests, we've had no drug overdoses, we've had no issues of any kind. So when you express your concerns, keep in mind that this has been going on for over 10 years without any incidents.
There was one incident.
And and what was that, sir?
I, it was. Well, I think there was one incident, but maybe I'm mistaken, but okay, go on.
No, what was the incident? No, you mentioned it, mentioned it.
I might be wrong, but go ahead.
What incident?
I'm not, I'm not sure, but go ahead. I'm sorry. No.
Okay, you were sure there was an incident 30 seconds ago?
I said you, you might have had one, but go on.
So was there, was there not an incident?
I don't, I don't really know, I think the people can draw their own conclusion to the incident, but go on.
You mentioned an incident and now you're.
Yeah, move on.
Now you're backing out.
Yep.
So there is no incident?
I guess not.
Okay, glad I clarified that.
Yep.
Responsibility of the selectmen, they are overseer of town operations. They manage the budget, they enact policies, but do not make laws. They are assessors and overseers of the poor. So we do not pick on the poor, we do not poke fun at the poor, we are overseer of the poor and we are supposed to help the poor. It is also the responsibility of the selectmen to ensure the safety of residents and town employees, ensure sufficient funds for fire and rescue, to ensure transfer station services for the taxpayers, to ensure town roads are maintained and safe, to ensure there is no malfeasance or misfeasance by selectmen individually or as a board, and to not neglect duties or commit misconduct of office. History of Lebanon. Lebanon is one of the oldest towns in the State of Maine, it was the 23rd town incorporated on June 17th, 1967. Lebanon was named after the biblical land of Lebanon and it would be nice if the residents of Lebanon could continue to behave in biblical fashions. Actually, the town of Lebanon consists of several villages, Central Lebanon, West Lebanon, North Lebanon, South Lebanon, and East Lebanon. Originally known as Talaw Plantation by the Nui Chawana, excuse me if I mispronounced that, Abenaki tribe. It was granted to 60 colonists in April of 1733 by Mass General Court, settled 10 years later in 1743, and then incorporated in 1767, weeks before the United States of America was incorporated. Lebanon is known for its privacy, vast land, affordable housing, and lower taxes. It's great, known to be a great place to start a business, has lots of space between houses and is known to be very friendly. Now, Lebanon Select Board history. Historically, Lebanon is a town with no town charter, which legally means the town was defined by state statutes only. Lebanon cannot make ordinances or new rules without a town charter, we must abide by the state statutes. Lebanon is a mixed-use property town, which means your property can be used agriculturally, residentially, commercially, or a combination of the three and has historically been used as such. Cannot limit where in town any business can be located without zoning. This includes marijuana facilities. We cannot limit the number of any type of business done within the town without zoning. This includes marijuana facilities. You cannot have zoning without a comprehensive plan. You cannot have a comprehensive plan without a town charter. You cannot discriminate against where someone establishes their residence, their business, or their agricultural activities within the perimeters of the town without a town charter, without comprehensive plan, and without zoning. Lebanon Select Board history. You cannot blame one selectman, nor can you blame one select board. This is decades of disregard to the rules and the laws. Do you understand that? I'm not blaming this board, I'm not blaming the previous board. This has been an ongoing thing that needs to be remedied. Previously, all Lebanon voter decisions were made at the annual town meeting by appearing in person with a show of hands vote. If the show of hands vote was too close to tell to the eye, there were scraps of paper passed out and you wrote your decision on the passed out paper on the spot, then those pieces of paper were counted on the spot. This method is still the only legal method Lebanon has for town meetings. The only people who have or had the power to change this annual town meeting was the voters. Because many years ago, it was a previous select board who made the change to paper ballots from the personal meeting attendance. And not the voters. Then legally, all decisions should be done at the personal attendance town meetings and not paper ballots. Historically, for 200 years, all decisions were made at the town meeting where you went in person. There was no absentee ballots, there was no paper ballots. The expenses incurred by the town of Lebanon by changing the annual town meeting to having to do paper ballot elections is immense. So one, you want to talk about money being spent that doesn't need to be spent. Two, the voters of this town did not vote to change their chosen form of government to ballot elections from the in-person town meetings. That's a problem that needs to be remedied. Ordinances go back as far as 1973, from some quick research. Recording town meeting votes, ballots. Recording town meeting votes, ballot votes, and secret ballot elections. For 200-plus years, Lebanon operated on the annual town meeting with no ordinances. And then, in about 1973, the ordinance started to come into play. Now, I want to discuss the marijuana ordinance history. Excessive taxpayers' money was spent on creating, rewriting, and revoting for an ordinance that is illegal and unenforceable, as are many other ordinances, pretty much all the ordinances, without the town charter. First time the town people voted on the marijuana issues, it passed, but was written wrong and could not be implemented. Approximately a year later, the second time the voters had the opportunity to vote on the marijuana policies, rec, recreational marijuana failed and did not pass. Medical marijuana also failed by one vote and did not pass. The third time it was presented to the voters, it was presented in a special election, which cost the taxpayers an excessive amount of money that didn't need to be spent. On the third time, the people voted on the marijuana policy at the special election, recreational marijuana failed, and medical marijuana passed by only eight votes. Chairman Chuck Russell decided to implement using the results from the first original vote that couldn't be implemented because it wasn't enforceable, and ignored the voters' results from the second election vote and the third time that we voted on it. This is the definition of malfeasance. Marijuana ordinance is unenforceable and illegal. It's already cost a taxpayer tens of thousands of dollars in lawsuits. Now, I'm going to briefly discuss Chuck Russell, Charles Russell, Chairman Charles Russell. I'm not going to be specific about any of the specific things that Mr. Russell has done inappropriately.
Terry, you're here to talk about Charlies Hill. If you want to, if you want to agree with me.
You never asked me what I was on the agenda for. Don't tell me what I'm here to talk about, sir.
Well, that's what, that's what you're going to talk about.
I asked for an hour, and you've interrupted me on multiple times.
I have.
No one else has.
Yep. I don't think everyone wants to sit and hear about all my misgivings and everything that everyone says I've done wrong.
Well, the sorry reason that I, my whole hour was to cater to their issues with my activities. You were previously recalled for violation of oath of office, neglect of duty, misconduct in office, violation of taxpayers' civil rights,
misfeasance, malfeasance, serious misconduct amounting to a breach of public trust.
You have again, Mr. Russell, behaved inappropriately.
Terry, hold on.
Orders as a whole is responsible to have this conduct cease immediately. Now.
Terry.
Terry, they called point of order.
You're going to have to wait a minute, please.
Personal attacks does not have anything to do with what we were representing right now.
It was okay if Jerry Lenoi and Chuck Russell made personal attacks during a selectman's meeting.
There was no personal attacks. There was no personal attacks.
But I can't call Mr. Russell out on his inappropriate behavior.
Yes.
Right, okay, so you all can slander me, talk horrible things about me, but I can't honestly talk about honest things that Mr. Russell has or has not done. I got you. Yeah, that's fine, because I'm on to my next page. Hey, nobody asked me what I wanted to be on the agenda for. It's not my fault assumptions were made. Now, my reply to the citizens' concerns about the July meeting. Cars are legally parked on the side of the road. Nothing illegal there. Guests from out of state are not illegal. It's not illegal to have guests from out of state. The fire engine still fits with the parked cars on the side of the road. One of the citizens had addressed a problem, uh, concern that we do not have running water. Of course I have running water at my house, okay? The pro, the point of the young man's video was that I'm not going to leave my garden hose on so everybody can play in the garden hose and make a mud hole. So I wanted to make sure that was clear. Um, I've been hosting events for over 10 years with no public safety problems. No public safety problems. I have paid property taxes for 20-plus years in the town of Lebanon. We are now exempt from property taxes, thanks to the neighbor who expressed her concerns about whether or not I did or did not pay property taxes. Looked into registering the church many, many years ago, and what I found was you can register your church name and save the name so no one else takes it. And the only other concern the state of Maine has with your church is to issue you a nonprofit 501(c) EIN number. Well, I don't make any money. I do take donations. I don't make $1,000. Never mind eat my shirt 30-plus thousand. So, but I appreciate that because now I'm not going to pay property taxes. Both the churches are, are currently registered. Um, to Jerry Lenoi, you stated you had 100, 150 people that had a problem. We've got less than 20 here. You don't have to spy. You don't have to stand on the edge of the property lines and spy. You don't have to cut brush back on the Shapley Road. And understand this, my property marker is a few inches from the edge of the hot top on the corner of Central Road and Shapley Road. For 20 years, I have kept that iron rod marker uncovered because it always gets covered up. So when you want to talk about cutting the brush, Jerry, that's actually on my property. So anybody can go and check that, right there on the hot top corner of Central and Shapley Road. Little rebar folded over is just a few inches from the edge of the tar there, just to clarify that. But you don't have to spy from property boundaries. As you yourself said, I offered you a free pass. You would have been more than friendly, welcome to come in and look around. You could have walked around. You could have gone around and counted every tent on the whole property. There was no need to spy. But that's how you want to behave. That's your choice. It's a free country. Um, yeah, as for the unknown neighbor who blew off shots from his gun, I want you to understand that many people who watched that meeting on July 1st were under the impression that it was us on my property who was blowing off shots with a gun. So I want to make sure that it's very clear to everyone that we were not blowing off any kind of firearms or guns or weapons. And when you come to a public meeting and you say, oh, somebody's popping off shots because they're so frustrated, that's threatening. This is misconduct with a firearm. This is being an irresponsible gunman. So all these neighbors want to sit over there and act like y'all are perfect and, and I'm just nothing but trash. Understand this, I've lived there 20 years. I watched children get on and off school buses, get picked up by parents and driven off in their vehicles that clearly do not live at the home they are being picked up at. They clearly are not residents of this school district. So don't even try to tell me how perfect you are. And then there was the thing with the conservation committee, okay, another perfect neighbor. But yet somehow or another, the conservation committee took it upon themselves to say, hey, we're going to allow public access on someone's private driveway. Again, that's kind of being a rude neighbor from Lebanon resident to Lebanon resident. So none of us are perfect. Some of us are better than others, but none of us are perfect. I have an events campground license, events and campground license issued by the state. Charlies Hill and Cannabis Church of New England are registered churches and registered nonprofit corporations. Freedom of speech. We have the right to assemble, especially on private property. Even if it has events that are open to the public, it is still private property. We also have freedom of religion. You cannot tell us how or when we can practice our religion, especially on private property. The extent of energy and taxpayer money that Chairman Russell has spent trying to shut down the activities at Charlies Hill, bury us in fines, i- it's absurd, all of it, and it needs to stop. The hate club needs to stop. Chairman Russell had stated at the July 1st, I know it wasn't the July 1st meeting, it was the one a few weeks later. The problem is Terry knows the rules. Why is it a problem if I know the rules? I've educated myself ahead of time to learn the rules, and I make great effort to make sure that I comply by the rules. So why is it a problem if I know the rules? The problem is she knows the rules. I abide by the rules, and I expect all others to abide by the rules as well. Unfortunately, we must agree to disagree, and we need to walk away in peace. My church will continue to have activities. I will not stop doing that. There were 52 weeks in a year. 20 of those weeks are summer weekends. I do not have loud music during the week when people have to go to work. The music is on Friday nights and Saturday nights. So let's see, 20 weekends, that's 40 days out of a whole year's worth of days. So we're not doing anything wrong. We're not doing anything illegal. We're not doing anything immoral. And I'm sorry if the music bothers you. I understand you guys have your residential activities and you feel that my commercial activities are interfering with your residential activities. Again, this is Lebanon. We have mixed-use property. Agriculturally, commercially, or residentially, we can use our property however we want to, as long as it's within the rules. So this Saturday, I'm doing a special event to raise money for a young lady by the name of Autumn. She's 17 years old. She has a very rare form of cancer. They live in Northern Maine. She is in Boston Children's Hospital. They have seven children. She's the oldest of the children, and her parents are trying to figure out how to handle travel expenses between their home in Maine and the Boston Children's Hospital. All the children are welcome. It's a safe, friendly place, and I pray that we do not have any hate club angry neighbors who are going to harass these people who are coming to support this young lady Autumn and her cancer. That's all I have.
Awesome. Thank you so much. How you doing, chief? Welcome.
Was there any questions from anybody else here?
No.
No, there's not. This is the United States of America. It's a free country, and this is Lebanon, a mixed-use property. So, you know, I, I, I tried. We, we had an agreement to turn the music off at 1:00 a.m. because that's what time the bars close. The bars close at 1:00 a.m., so the music goes off at 1:00 a.m.
9:15 is not early. All right, so anybody have anything else for us? No? Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Peace and love, people. Peace and love.
Peace and love. I love it. Anybody, we're going to take a brief recess if everybody's okay with that, and then we're going to go into some executive sessions. Thank you, guys. Hello, Ann. Welcome. You just missed the fun.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Have a great night.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
4-0. Endless need. Motion. To adjourn. 4-0. Endless need. 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 4-0.[1122.00]